All right, shall we call the Belvidere City Committee, Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 8th, 2021 to order? The clerk will call the roll, please.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. Mickey?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens? Stevens is absent. Eight present.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment here this evening? Anybody registered?
No.
No? Okay, I will make a comment regarding next Monday evening, 11:15. Former Mayor Brereton will be here with National Day of Prayer, and we will have a... He was so kind to bring a dinner down, be bringing dinner here for the council and staff here at 6:00 PM prior to the 7 o'clock meeting. If I could, after the meeting, get a head count so that we have an idea of how many people will be here, be able to make it early, that would be great. So, thank you for that. We don't have any public forum here tonight. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item 1, Public Works Unfinished Business, we have none. Item 2, Public Works New Business. We have Public Works Department Update, Director Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. On the street side, our fall branch pickup, we're finishing that up. We're on the northeast side of town this week, so we will have that finished after that. Our leaf pickup program is underway, and we're working on the north side this week on that. We did locate a new bucket truck. We have purchased a 2021 Dodge 5500 four-by-four chassis with a Versa Lift VST40 MHI aerial bucket body, and the total cost of that vehicle delivered to Belvidere is $152,878. So, it's under budget, and actually, they're going to deliver it tomorrow. So, that's what I have for the street department. At the wastewater treatment plant, we were notified today that our ComEd Strategic Energy Partnership Program has been extended for a third year, and this program looks for innovative ways to conserve energy and includes 10 other wastewater plants in the greater Chicagoland area. And I think this year's going to be the same as the previous year where we would get two cents per kilowatt-hours earnings on our savings of our electrical usage. So, it's been a great program for us, and as long as they want to keep extending it, that'll be a good thing. So, that's all I got for updates.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Anderson? Alderman Flurry?
Brent, was that the truck you went to look at in Oklahoma?
No, it wasn't. The one we went to look at in Oklahoma was a demonstrator model, and actually, the lift, the bucket, was a 37-foot lift, and the one we ended up getting is a 40-foot lift, so it's got an extra three feet, and it doesn't sound like a lot, the difference, but it actually is with our streetlights, our maximum light on streetlights is 40 feet, and with this 40-foot bucket, they measure it to the bottom of the bucket. So, actually, when the guys go up to work on them, they can basically put the light on the top of the bucket and use that as a platform to work on it, so it's quite handy. So, this one we found in Texas. And because we went to Oklahoma to look at that one, we didn't need to go to Texas to look at this one, so that way, we just delivered it back to here.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right, hearing none, thank you. We have Item B, 2B, Request to Vacate Alley Located at 121 North State Street. In your packet, there's a memo to that effect. I will say that the city has the parking lot over there that's a public, is a public parking lot. This section, which is shown in the attachment that you have, provides actually nothing for the city regarding... Actually, it provides more maintenance for the city, especially regarding plowing and any other maintenance that you might have. You can see that the individuals who've requested this have the property, have the garages that are actually behind to the east of the alley, and their property is located at North State Street to the west of the alley. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve, and then we'll have discussion if there is any. Can I get a motion to that effect? Thank you. Motion by Elder Woman Frank, do we have a second? Second by Elder Woman Prather? Any discussion? Alderman Snow?
So, Brent, do these guys realize that we are not going to be plowing that area?
Yes, and actually, if you look at the next item on the agenda, if you look at the map, that's the attachment for that part of it, for the DCEO grant project, it gives you a bigger overview. And with the, since we've acquired the former Burton Mortars property, then, as you can see, the alley to be vacated is still marked out in red, and the former alley there is highlighted in yellow, and with the purchase of the Burton property, it makes that alley basically obsolete. We no longer need that to have access to all those properties. So, the fact that this alley now bisects this property and basically cuts it in half by vacating it back to this property owner, it'll be of great benefit to the property owner.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Alderman Snow?
So, how about the adjacent, I guess it'd be to the north, that red section, is that anything to look at vacating as well, since that's probably not of any use, or no?
Well, again, if you look at the, this map here that's attached to the grant, so everything in yellow is being proposed as improvements through that project, and then we would just leave the red one out, just because simply, if there was private property going further north, then yes, my recommendation would be to vacate more of it, but because it's not, it's all basically going to, it's all our property, so there's not the reason, the impetus to vacate that portion of it. Actually, it gives us enough room to provide them, again, access to the rear of their buildings, and we can still incorporate some of our parking improvements in that area as well. So, I think it'll work out to the benefit of both parties.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, then. Item B, to request to vacate, request to vacate the alley at 121 North State Street. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this will come back, obviously, in ordinance form, but we also need a plat of vacation, as well as a legal description, and it has, requires public caring. It may make it by first reading next Monday night, but we'll see.
Thank you. Item 2C, DCEO Grant Application, Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, "The State of Illinois Capital Program has issued a notice of funding opportunity for the rebuild downtowns and main streets program. The program will provide grants to support improvements and encourage investment in commercial corridors and downtowns. Grant awards will range from $250,000 to $3 million and be administered by the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. Units of local government are not required to offer matching funds, but doing so may improve chances of receiving an award. And the application for this grant program, they're due no later than January 10th of 2022. Based on the criteria for this grant, I believe that the expansion and enhancements to parking lot number seven would be a good candidate project. The project will include new bytuminisurfacing, curb and gutter, lighting, pedestrian access to the riverfront, with amenities including possibly a handicap fishing pier and boat dock, as well as landscaping. Attached to this memo is a proposal from Arc Design Resources in the amount of $2,900 to complete the design concept plan, the opinion of probable cost estimate, and the grant application. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Arc Design Resources in the amount of $2,900 to complete the grant application with supporting documentation for the parking lot seven expansion and enhancement project. This work will be paid for from line item 0153106002."
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? By Alderman Porter. Any discussion? Any comments? Any complaints? Elder Woman Frank?
So, Brent, are we going to be offering them a matching money?
We'll see what it looks like when we, I think we will, probably, would be my recommendation. We'll see what the overall project costs. Right now, I'm thinking it's going to be in the $500,000 to $700,000 range. So, we will, council's going to have some decisions coming up on some, some funding that we've already gotten, received from the federal for the, as part of the COVID relief packages and so forth, so some of that monies may be available, or some other capital monies that we have already in the budget that are being basically covered by grants that we've had, been awarded to us already. So, I think there's going to be some, some funding opportunities available to us to make a more competitive project by offering somewhat of a match. But again, once we get the information back from Arc Design, it'll give us a better handle on what exactly that will be. And I did mention earlier, but we'll also include probably some electric charging stations in the parking lot as well.
Thank you. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. So, if we don't receive that grant, you know, and obviously, Arc's still going to do the plan for that, how long would that project be good, in case we would have to fund the whole thing? I mean, obviously, we wouldn't want to do that right away, but down the road, like, how long would that plan be good for?
Well, the plan itself will be good, good, soon as it's done, it's not going to change, really, unless we were to acquire property or some of the other, something else like would change. We started doing some work on it already earlier this year, and the work that we will be proposing to do through the grant will complement that and enhance what we've already done. So, if we don't get the grant award, it'll just be a longer process for us to finish it, depending, again, on, on our upcoming projects, what council wants to do, what the priorities are, and how we can see it. The original contemplation was we were going to end up spending probably about $50,000 to $70,000, do most of the work ourselves, put, do, install some lighting there, do some patching, bytuminispatching, do a little bit of landscaping to make it basically usable as good as we could. However, with this grant opportunity, we can make it basically redevelop the whole area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And according to the State of Illinois, under their capital grant program, this definitely fits right in with what you have rebuilding downtowns and Main Street programs. So, I would think we'd be successful at that. I don't have any reason to doubt it, unless they run out of money. But, anything else? Alderman McGee?
Thank you. Is there a way we can think maybe like a kayak launch or a canoe launch rather than a boat dock? The Belvidere Park District's already got the boat dock, and really, for boat traffic, you can only go from the dam to, about up to the Eby with a boat, and I just think that it'd be unutilized personally, being we've already got a boat dock at the park district.
Yeah, and sure, we can always look at that, other amenities as well. I know there's a canoe launch below the dam. I know there's a boat ramp above the dam. I'm not sure if you can do a canoe launch there or not, but yes, any of those amenities, we will be open to, to have available to us.
As well, whenever the leaf building come down, we were able to obtain some of the timbers and the stanchions that were a part of the leaf building, so potentially, we could use that to put a shelter there, or some side of, some type of a shelter there on that as well, close to whatever we decide to do with the river.
Correct, and if you drive by the property currently, you'll see a stack of limestone blocks, and basically, those were the foundation from the leaf property, from the leaf building that we had transported over there to use them on the, along the riverbank, along the park area. So, that's why they're stacked up over there right now.
Any other questions? Alderman Snow?
Obviously, Arc's going to be aware that it is a, I'm going to call it a brownfield, it's got cap issues and things like that.
Correct, yep. So, that'll be all taken care of in the, in consideration of the improvements that are going to be done.
Okay. Anything else? All right, hearing nothing, then we have a motion that would approve the proposal, recommend the approval of proposal from Arc Design Resources in the amount of $2,900 to complete the grant application with supporting documentation for the parking lot number seven expansion and enhancement program. This work will be paid for from line item 01-5-310-6002. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item 3 on the agenda, building, planning, zoning, unfinished business, we have none. Item 4, building, planning, zoning, new business, Planning and Zoning Department Update, Gina?
So, Plan Commission has one case tomorrow. It is a rezoning for North State Street. It goes along with the annexation that's going to be discussed tonight. It's a pretty simple matter. Most people already assume that property's in the city, so not too much change to the neighborhood by annexing and rezoning. We are getting closer to have the bush development move forward, so that could be on Plan Commission for December. Not too many zoning verification letters last month, which is weird because property is still selling pretty quickly. Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission had their awards program on October 14th, so for those that showed up, thank you. They also had a grant reimbursement on Hurabut Avenue, and now they're looking at one of their winter fundraisers, stained glass windows for the churches. So, that is going to be moving forward. Hometown Christmas is well underway. We had the downtown truck-or-treat, trick-or-treat, and then the very next day, Hometown Christmas photo shoots and promotional items. So, lost a couple sponsors this year, but gained a couple sponsors, and I believe all but two of the activities are set and ready to move forward. So, as long as we have good weather, it should be a very good Hometown Christmas this year. The Last Strolls was held on October 3rd, and I'm already getting phone calls from bands and vendors wanting to know the date of strolls for next year, so I got to start working on that. And that is the biggest part. I still have the facade ground I'm administering, and Historic Preservation has some vacancies, and again, staff did the trick-or-treat. There was about 2,000 kids downtown. It was a pretty crazy night.
Gina, was that one of the biggest events down there that you had seen? I don't recall it ever getting, being that downtown, being that...
Yeah, it, well, that was the first Halloween event, and it's definitely not going to be the last. They're talking about maybe next year, setting off fog machines and some lights and turning downtown into like one giant haunted house that night. Brent's already looking at me like, no.
Police chief isn't here either.
Right. But it was, it was definitely a lot bigger than anyone anticipated. A lot of vendors ran out of candy, but the weather was gorgeous, and like most outdoor events, it's weather-driven. Hometown Christmas, for instance, I think it was three years ago, we had about 2,800 people, because the museum actually has a counter, so they had 2,800 people through the museum a couple years ago. The weather was gorgeous. And then, Hometown Christmas, when it's, you know, five degrees and sleeting, you don't get anyone out there. So, but yeah, that was definitely one of the largest events we've had downtown in a very long time. So, and one of the best comments I saw on Facebook was, "I drive downtown all the time, you know, to go to work, and I've never really paid attention." She's like, "We have some amazing shops downtown. I can't wait to actually go shopping there. I've never paid attention when I've driven past." Like, well, that was the whole point to me, like, this is what we have. Quit driving past us." So, it was a very successful event.
Is that it? Thank you, and thank you for all your efforts. I appreciate it. All right, Item B, Special Use Extension for 825 North Appleton Road. That's the Conservation District Solar Farms, Gina?
Yep. So, if you remember, back in 2018, there was a special use to put a solar farm on the landfill that is in the Conservation District off of Appleton Road. It's a very good reuse of the property, since nothing can go there because it's a landfill. As part of the special use condition, they would have to plant it with pollinating plants and low-maintenance vegetation, which would take the mowing burden off the Conservation District, which would save the Conservation District time and money, which ultimately saves taxpayers time and money. They did not get the lottery that went through the first time, so they did get an extension. They did not get the lottery that went through the second time, although several Boone County projects did. So, they are hopeful that they'll get the lottery the third time around. So, they are asking for an extension. I know in their letter, it states two years, but we can only grant extensions one year at a time. I do want to note that Terra Navigator, the original applicant, no longer owns the project. It is now Amerisco that bought the project from them. Perfect example of why you can't look at the applicant when approving things, because properties change, I mean, owners change and stuff like that, and this is a perfect example. But they are still held within the same conditions of the special use as the original applicant.
Okay. Any questions for Gina? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to extend it one year.
Okay. We have a motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Elder Woman Mahal? Any, any discussion? Any other discussion? Any questions? Okay. Hearing none, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And we have the Larson, 2106 North State Street. There's an error on your agenda. Should be 2106 North State, I believe. State Street Annexation Agreement. I'll refer here to the city attorney.
I'm taxing this with Ms. Del Rose. There's actually two items that you need to vote on tonight, and yes, it should be 2106 North State Street. I was dyslexic in my memo to the city clerk.
I'm on the call.
Oh, well, at least I'm not the only one. With respect to the date, but with respect to the property address, but it's 2106 North State Street. It is a residential property, completely surrounded by the city, that is a pocket of county within the city. They need to connect to city utilities at this point, so they're seeking to annex the property to the city. Annexation, some of you have been through this, some of you have not. Typically, there are several steps, one of which is the approval of an annexation agreement with the property owner, the second, which is the actual annexation of the property to the city by ordinance, the third of which is because when property comes into the city, it's automatically zoned. Is we're holding, is the process, a rezoning on the property, in this case, too, I believe SR6, is that correct, Gina? And obviously, because this is already built, there's no need for a PUD or anything like that. So, those three steps. So, tonight, what we'll be looking for is first, a motion to forward the city council on annexation agreement relating to 2106 North State Street.
Okay, do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Elder Woman Prather, second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussion regarding that property and that motion? Alderman Snow?
So, the map's a little tough to read, so what exactly is this next to?
It is right across the street from the ultimate car wash. It is white with blue trim. Yeah, the second house from the corner of Highline and State.
And you'll notice the annexation agreement's about the most bland annexation agreement you'll ever see. In fact, I questioned the need for one, but our own code says, "Do one," so we did.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. Aye?
The second motion I'd be thinking this evening, Your Honor, is a motion to annex the real property commonly known as 2106 North State Street.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion regarding that motion?
And this will come back as an ordinance, because this is a voluntary annexation. It is simply by an ordinance that does require a public hearing on the annexation agreement that you just forwarded. So, both the ordinance approving the annexation agreements and the actual annexation of the property will come for first reading next Monday. And then, at the first meeting in December, there will be a public hearing on the annexation agreement, followed by a vote on the annexation agreement, followed by a vote on the annexation, followed by a vote on the zoning change. This does go to Planning and Zoning tomorrow night for their consideration on the zoning.
Okay. So, we have a motion, second on the floor. Any other discussion?
Should have pointed out, the Atkins attorney is here in the council chambers, former city attorney, Mr. Pop. If there's questions, you can always give him a call later on if you want to, or I'm sure he'll be back here in, in four weeks, so.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
All right, Item B, Building and Zoning Update.
Thank you, Your Honor. For October, we issued 93 permits for a value of just over $2,600,000. Seventeen of those were commercial, 76 were residential. We currently have 49 houses under construction for single-family homes. On the property maintenance or commercial side, I have been talking with Rosa Moscato in regards to her tenant build-out. There's another one at the other closed cash store by the Donut Store and Gateway Center. For property maintenance, we have 56 cases currently open. Now, entertain, any questions?
Any questions for Kip? Kip, you said we had 49 new, new home permits?
To date, yeah. We, some of them have been closing, have they, as they have completed construction. I just issued 10 last week, and I have five under review. Farmington Fields, Riverbend, and now they're starting to go into Deer Hills Preserve, Village River Run, primarily are the subdivisions that are being built on, which I haven't had permits on them for 13 years.
And they've, these have included impact fees?
Correct.
So, it doesn't look like impact fees were that big of a deal after all, does it? Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Just to add to that, with the sudden flurry of building activity, believe it or not, our water meters suffer the same issues as new cars and stuff with the crystals and the technology that are in those.
stuff with the crystals and the technology that are in those. Uh, so, it's been very hard to locate meters. We've been scrambling, since Kip keeps telling me every week, we keep getting more and more houses. Um, so we're having a hard time keeping up with meters and also meter setters. When we called this last week to get our meter setters, uh, we were told it was gonna be eighteen weeks, uh, before we could see them. Um, so we're in a bit of scramble over there. Again, we've been talking to a couple of local fabricators to see if they can, uh, start producing these locally, so I will know probably in the next week or two if that's, uh, a possibility or not, and, uh, otherwise, we'll be making some alternate arrangements to provide water for these houses.
You'd had a trouble, we'd had trouble here recently, uh, obtaining any, correct?
Correct. We've been, we've been scouring. We've, so far, we've been able to keep up with the schedule, and, and I'm hopeful that we will continue to do so. What we have, uh, our orders in to cover it, it's just a matter of trying to, uh, track them down basically all across the country to, to locate the meters that we need, so.
Okay. Thank you for the update, but it sounds like either way, we're prepared, so we'll, see what happens. All right. Thank you, Kip. Uh, item five, other, uh, A, intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Public Health and the City of Belvidere. Uh, you have the intergovernmental agreement for the death certificate surcharge fund. Uh, so, this is the, uh, agreement, uh, and this is something that, it's my understanding, it's not, uh, usually, it's not updated only every so often. So... Do we have a motion to approve that? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions? Any comments? Any concerns? Alderwoman Frank?
I was reading through here, and I got some different years. Um, how many years is this good for when we renew, and is there a cost to that?
It's good through, uh, December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-seven, and no, there's not a cost. In fact, it's so they could send us money.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor, then to approve the agreement, uh, between the Illinois Department of Public Health and the City of Belvidere, uh, regarding the death certificate surcharge fund, not tax, but fund. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? No, thank you. Motion passed. And item B, the IML Risk Management Association Annual Renewal. Uh... Do we have a motion to approve that, uh, for discussion? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second. Second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion? So, this is our, uh, twenty-twenty-two IML Risk Management Association Annual, uh, contribution, which encompasses work comp, auto liability and comprehensive general liability, portable equipment, auto physical damage, and property coverage, uh, all of the above. The total for that is seven-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Um, is there any discussion? Any questions? Alderwoman Frank?
Okay, have we decided what option we're going to do?
Option one? Uh, option two?
No, option one, so we get discount, we pay it early.
Okay, okay. Option one, yeah, okay.
Thank you, mayor.
Price of doing business? Any other questions? Any concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item C, announcement of estimated tax levy for tax year twenty-twenty-one, and Budget, uh, Finance Director Shannon Hansen, uh, do you have any comments?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I've got a couple of documents in your pack. At the first one, it's just a memo that does, um, recommending that the city's levy remain the same as it was last year, and the Idaho Public Library, Library is looking for an increase of fourteen-thousand-eight-ninety, or two percent, which is to cover the, um, increase in the, um...
Minimum wage.
Minimum wage. Uh, and then the second document, it's just a comparison, and again, because we're requesting that the same amount, uh, the extension and the levy are, are identical.
I think it's important that we try and live within our means, and, uh, I don't believe that we should have a increase in our tax levy. Uh, I think we've had tough times, and perhaps maybe tougher coming forward, going forward, and, uh, pleased that we, uh, that we can present for a vote for no tax levy increase, at least from the city's point of view, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, for the audience at home, it would be appropriate to note that the, uh, estimated levy for the City of Belvidere for the upcoming year would be four million nine-hundred-and-eighty-three thou, thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars, and the estimated levy for the Idaho Public Library would be seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. These are estimated levies under the Truth and Taxation Act. The city council is required to approve the estimated levy. That does not mean you're approving that levy. The actual levy ordinance would come back after this, so it's not be appropriate to forward to city council a motion to approve the estimated levy and the amount stated. Uh, at the next city council meeting, uh, you would vote on this and also receive for first reading the actual, um, uh, levy ordinance.
Okay, okay, thank you. Alderman Burden?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, so, along the same lines as what, uh, you were just saying, mayor, about living within our means, um, I find it, um, admirable and honorable that the city, I mean, here we go again, we're not gonna, the plan is to not raise our, our portion of the tax levy, um, but again, the library is, um, I really just don't think that's fair, I guess.
Well, um, it is, uh, this is not the final vote on the levy. This will come back. Um, I appreciate Alderman Burden. I think, uh, you know, I think it is important that we, uh, recognize that, uh, the cities should act as the public does with their budget. Uh, the public's on a fixed income. The public certainly lives within their budget, and, uh, the city is going to this levy year as well, so. I appreciate, uh, your comments, and, uh, you know, as we go forward, uh, you know, I think there's an appropriate time for the council to ask any questions, uh, regarding that. I know I was not here, uh, for the last levy, um, that was proposed, uh, whether I wasn't in office. Uh, I was here as a spectator in the audience, and, uh, I do know that at that time, the levy, uh, for the library was an eighteen-thousand-dollar, uh, additional increase on the levy, and, uh, you know, at that time, that was for, uh, the director and director's salary, whom actually, as you may recall or may not, but, uh, so that we're, uh, accurate, uh, that director was here, asked for that money, and then quit, and he never, he never was in that position. So, it's up to the council to go ahead and, uh, to think about this and then bring it back. Uh, you can bring it back in the form of a vote, uh, as we go forward.
And, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, the, the director did wanna be here tonight. I was informed by the clerk that, fortunately, she had all obligations. She will be here when this is discussed, uh, I believe, at, at first and second reading as well, so, uh, she'll be available to ask questions of the, of the levy at that point.
And that is, that, that's good. I'm glad. Um, I'm sure there will be some questions. Alderman Snow, did you have a question?
I was just gonna echo what, um, Mr. Drella said, 'cause Mindy had reached out to me to let me know that she was gonna be here, um, next week to discuss.
I would also like to, uh, make sure that, um, it's reflected so that we're accurate with the record that, uh, as it turned out, that eighteen-thousand-dollar increase was not spent on a new director, because Mindy, uh, is the one, Mindy Long is the one that now has that job, and I know she was here before the council and it, and it, had explained that that, uh, eighteen thousand did not go towards that director's salary, as some of the aldermen here questioned, because actually, it was the only thing they had in writing, uh, to vote upon at that time, and that, I was here, and that, uh, I recognize, so. Um, so anyhow, we have a motion. Alderman Burden?
Thanks, one more time, Eric. Just for clarification, then, so voting on this tonight, is this is just to accept that this is the figure presented? Is that right? And then, uh...
It's not even that. Um, the Truth and Taxation Act requires all municipalities to approve an estimated levy. It does, doesn't even have to be the number in your actual levy that's, that's introduced. It probably will be, 'cause nothing's gonna change, I don't think, between now and next week. Um, but this is just approving the estimated levy. The actual levy ordinance will not be introduced to you until next week.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Alderman Snow. Do we have a second? Second by Alderwoman Mohal? Any discussion? Any further discussion? Any comments? Any questions? Any corrections? Alderwoman Prather?
I just wanted to, didn't Mindy say that she had actually frozen her salary for the next few years? Didn't she say that?
Yeah, I think, uh, she did. I don't remember how many, but I do believe in the future, yes. And, uh, I thought more importantly, that, uh, the increase in tax levy that, uh, was passed, uh, for the library last year wasn't, uh, used for, uh, the director's salary, the eighteen thousand dollars, which, if you recall, would've been a thirty, thirty-three percent increase, so. Okay, all right. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Okay, motion passed, thank you. Okay, without any other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderman Flurry. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, for, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it, and for the record, we adj, let it show, we adjourned at six forty-one PM. Thank you.